All right, why not? Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 4th session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the temporary clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Tac?
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Levert?
Here.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walter?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First item on the agenda is comments by Mayor, and we'll start with a reminder about Lake Forest Day coming up Tuesday and Wednesday. As you all know, this is one of our longstanding traditions. We hope everybody shows up and enjoys the event, the 5K Fun Run, and of course, the carnival. The next item is the Summer Dialogue Contest winner. On the back of the Summer Dialogue newsletter is a match-the-mural contest where we ask residents to identify where these three murals are located. Before we recognize the winner, do any of the Aldermen know where these are?
Yes.
And?
The first one is the bridge under the viaduct, thank you, by Gorton. Oh, shoot. The third one is the alley behind, by Left Bank.
Yes?
The library.
Thank you.
See?
In the library? Okay.
All right. Thought we could pull the wool over your eyes, huh? All right. From all the correct entries, we drew one winner, and this is Meredith, and I hope I get this right, it's either Peeper or Pepper, I'm not sure, but congratulations, Meredith. We have some Lake Forest goodies for you. Feel free to pick them up at City Hall. All right. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for retiring Deputy Clerk Joyce McAndrews. I'm going to read the resolution at this time. Whereas Joyce K. McAndrews has been a dedicated and valued employee of the city of Lake Forest since May 13th, 2015, and whereas Joyce K. McAndrews honorably retired from the city on July 4th, 2025, after more than a decade of loyal and distinguished service, and whereas Joyce K. McAndrews, who became affectionately known as "The Face of the City," served in the following positions during her tenure: administrative assistant, deputy clerk, registrar, and most importantly, a trusted colleague and friend to many. Whereas throughout her career, Joyce was known for her outstanding customer service, kind spirit, and calm professionalism. She greeted every interaction, whether with residents, colleagues, or community partners, with grace, compassion, and a genuine desire to help. Her deep knowledge of city operations, attention to detail, and pride in her role ensured that the daily workings of City Hall remained seamless and welcoming. Whereas Joyce's dedication, warmth, and heartfelt love for the city of Lake Forest made a lasting impact on those around her and exemplified the highest ideals of public service. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its deep appreciation and sincere gratitude to Joyce K. McAndrews for her years of service and commitment to the city of Lake Forest. And be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Joyce and spread upon the permanent record of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Joyce. All right. Next item on the agenda is the 2025-2026 Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. There's only a couple of them tonight, the first being Senior Resource Commission, Joanne Bloom, this is a first appointment, or the second is for the Plan Commission, Lisa Nearing, and this is a reappointment. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is comments by City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. Good evening. I have three items under my report this evening. The first, I think at this point has become an august tradition of welcoming the Friends of the Lake Forest Library to highlight all of their efforts within the community to support our beloved library, and I see our executive director and several library board members here in attendance as well. And in addition to sharing some of their efforts throughout the year, there's probably an opportunity to plug the upcoming book sale as well, which I think everyone knows is one of the most popular and beloved events in our community. So here to share the Friends story tonight is the current president of the Friends of Lake Forest Library, Dr. Tanya Wong.
Thank you, first, especially to Ishwar for being a friend and giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about the Friends of Lake Forest Library. We were founded in March of 1975, but didn't hold our first sale until September 1976. And since Friends is synonymous with sale, we're going to celebrate our 50th anniversary in 2026. We collect, sort, clean, box donated books, and a bunch of other items all year long in preparation for our annual fall sale. We've had different small specialty sales that have been added and subtracted throughout the years. Our first sale was held on a card table in the foyer of the library, but we quickly outgrew that and moved over to the Gorton parking lot, Gorton Center parking lot, and then into the Market Square, and then memorably, we moved to the West Park under a large, yellow, and white striped tent. In 2008, though, torrential rainfall nearly ruined many books and the sale. And so in 2009, we were invited to use the Lake Forest Rec Gym, and we've been there ever since, and they've been an exceptional host to our sale. Currently, we have 24 board members and about 50 regular volunteers who work year-round to sort through the many and myriad of donations, shelve the keepers, organize and price over 125,000 books, DVDs, CDs, puzzles, and games. We must sort through at least 200,000 books that are donated to those blue bins between October and August. We then generate approximately 2,400 full boxes that are stored until September. And then, under 72 hours, all those boxes are moved into the prepared gym, we unbox them, we shell them in designated sections, we label them and display them in over 100 different categories. We have shoppers from multiple different states and communities and engage over 200 volunteers during the week of the sale. Many books that we have sorted through but not kept or sold are then passed on to smaller libraries or to charitable literacy groups. Income from the sales, along with donation and membership fees, has allowed us to contribute over $3 million to our library. We have provided funding for their programs, as well as tangible building and property restoration and preservation. For 20 years, we've offered a scholarship essay contest for high school students who are from Lake Forest. Other specific contributions include community reading programs, summer activities for children, special speakers, and author readings. We have consistently been a cheerleader and a funder for the attentive restoration of some of the library's special features. We ensured that the window reframing was done with old-growth wood so that they would last another 100 years. We had the library's art collection appraised and catalogued. We saw to the restoration of some beautiful and valuable art pieces, not the least of which are the Remesoff murals which graced the front atrium. We have a large committed group of volunteers who all contribute to our mission of enhancing and supporting the vision and services of our beloved library. To that end, we have continued to enhance our sale and remain one of the largest used book sales in the state. Last year, we had over 3,500 people walk through our doors, and we grossed over $120,000. We approved and granted all the requests made by the library for 2025. This year, unfortunately, we have incurred more overhead costs as we have lost our main storage space due to the courtyard reconstruction within the library. We moved approximately 1,500 boxes to an off-site storage center and are on target to generate 900 more boxes by September 1. We will hold this year's public sale from Friday to Sunday on September 11th through 14th. We do invite life members and significant donors to view and buy books at a Wednesday night preview party. Thursday, the 11th, is designated Members Only Day, but memberships are highly affordable, and we welcome everyone who wants to be a member. Our goal is to exceed last year's numbers and hopefully profits, and we hope to kick off our upcoming 50th anniversary with some special events such as guided tours of significant art pieces held by the library, a birthday party on the lawn preceding our children's sale in June, and an after-hours adult party in October. We would love to be present and productive for another 50 years beyond 2026. We ask that the city remembers us and our space and our storage needs as this library undergoes more interior renovation. Our ability to offset many of the library's fiscal needs is due to our ability to hold our very magnificent and marvelous book sale. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Wong?
Well, just a comment. This is another example of a public-private partnership that benefits the city, maintains the low tax rate that we have in the city, and we thank you for your contributions to the community.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks so much. Next, as part of our monthly updates, both the City Council and the community, I'll ask Superintendent of Engineering Byron Coots to provide a status update on both the Deer Path streetscape and Bank Lane construction project. Byron?
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As Manager Wishia mentioned, I'm going to give the monthly update on Deer Path and Bank Lane. I know there's been a lot of community discussion the last month or two regarding the schedule and the peered pace of the job. I will address that in a few slides. First, we're going to do the monthly video recap. Picture on Deer Path showing the Masonry Walls. Now a picture on Bank Lane, back to Deer Path. Sidewalk that was poured on Deer Path about a week or two ago. More sidewalk. The Masonry Wall across the street. The Masonry Wall on Bank Lane. Overall picture of Deer Path. Excavation of the granite curb. So for Deer Path, in terms of upcoming work, I just want to highlight kind of what's going on right now and over the next week or so. So on the south side of the street, excavation has begun the last few days for granite curb installation, so they framed that out. They're probably going to pour it either later this week or early next week. So with Lake Forest Day starting in the next couple of days, we are trying to be cognizant of that, so we're trying to stage and sequence some of our work around that. But probably later in the week or early in the next week, we're going to shift pedestrian traffic to the south sidewalk, which has actually begun just east of Bank Lane. By doing that, once we're able to do that fully, get everyone to that south sidewalk, we'll be able to start removal of the north sidewalk and then frame that and pour that over the next week or two. The biggest work probably coming up is the western closure, which I know we've been talking about for a month or so. So that will start, we timed it after Lake Forest Day, so it's going to start August 7th to about August 24th. And what it entails is basically some storm sewer work and then removal and replacement of those crosswalks to new decorative, safer crosswalks. The detour route for that would be Illinois to Green Bay to Westminster. We are aware that, you know, the adjacent school does start, I believe, that Wednesday, so we are coordinating with them, just knowing that our detour route does go right in front. Another work item that's actually not on here is, I mentioned it last time, so whenever we were doing the water main project on Deer Path, we discovered that there was some services on Oakwood that were connected to an older main, so we basically proposed to switch those over to the newer main that's on the other side of the street. So that work is proposed to begin sometime next week. Coordination is underway for that. In terms of the business grants, I checked with the finance director earlier today, there have been three grant applications to date. And then in terms of the schedule, I know I talked about it at the beginning, I know there's been some sensitivities. We obviously take it very seriously, having, you know, this type of disruptive work in front of the businesses. So I just wanted to touch on that and say, I know there's some frustrations, we have some frustrations as well. Overall, I would say everything, I think is still on track, or it is, for the end of October. The delays, though, that have been causing frustration are, there's about three of those that I could name. So utility conflicts, so anytime we're designing a project, we get atlases with all kinds of information for underground utilities. There were some discrepancies with that, there were basically some additional utilities that weren't on the atlases, so we had to do some field design at several locations for that. Also, there's extensive material lead times for some of these materials, so, you know, these aren't the types of bricks and pavers that you get at like a typical hardware store. They're being specially made just for this job, and with this being a federally funded job, you know, we work with IDOT, and there's extensive paperwork, so it ended up taking a little bit longer than we anticipated to start ordering some of the materials. I will say, we have started receiving those the last few weeks, and if you look at the top-right picture, you can see in one of our adjacent parking lots that we have started to get light poles in these bags that are just full of different materials. So that is a good sign. Now those materials will be ready whenever we get to that stage of the project. And then just the sequencing in general, I would say is just one of the other items. I think that's caused some frustration for people, including us, is that in the earlier stages of the project, it was really one subcontractor getting their work done before the next contractor basically started their work, and to some extent, that was necessary. You kind of have to start at the bottom and work your way up before you start doing some of the decorative materials. I will say, there is a natural ebb and flow to any construction project. That being said, if we look back at the original construction schedule, there's maybe a three-to-four-day variance where potentially we would be behind three to four days from the original schedule. That being said, like I said earlier, there's an ebb and flow to every project. We have talked to the contractor, the consultant, they're still committed and are confident, and so are we, that we're still going to hit the dates at the end of October as committed. And we have daily conversations, like I mentioned. And just to kind of explain what measures we have, if there ever was with any of our projects, a situation where a contractor wasn't able to meet their completion date, we have liquidated damages that are written to all of our contracts. It's not necessarily something that we try to use on a regular basis, but in reality, if a contractor did not meet that, there would be liquidated damages, several thousand dollars a day. But again, that's not something that we necessarily look to do, and we've been assured by the contractor and the consultant that, like, even though, like I said earlier, the schedule we might be off by a few days, there's ebb and flow, and we are still overall on track for the end of October. Now kind of switching gears a little bit to communication, so this is part of our construction communication series, I believe this is the third event, it's been pretty successful so far. So this one is this Thursday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We're collaborating with Sage Explorers, and we're going to be out in Market Square kind of in conjunction with the concerts. And then switching gears to Bank Lane, as you know, most of the work is during the day, but some of the disruptive work is at night. Right now, a lot of the work occurring over the next week is during the day. The work that's been over the last week has been Masonry Wall installation on the east side, and then later this week, the contractor's going to pour the remaining spots that haven't received the concrete base course. So if you look at the top-left picture, you can kind of see the, it looks like sidewalk, but what it really is, is kind of the underlayment to the future bricks that are going to go there. So we have a couple of spots, we need to pour that still, that'll be hopefully later this week. And then once all of those outside sidewalk base course is poured, we're going to ship the pedestrians back to the sidewalks and then remove the pavement in the middle, move it all the way down, and then start building that back up with concrete, and then eventually all of it will be bricks. In terms of schedule, I would say it's similar to the sentiment that I said for Deer Path, where especially for Bank Lane, the amount of utilities that are jammed in that corridor is actually kind of quite impressive. We found quite a bit every time we've dug a hole, and we've had to kind of do some field design. So that has caused us some complications, and then the same material lead times for this job, we aren't dealing with the same amount of paperwork due to this being a local job, but some of these decorative materials are out quite a bit. And then just the sequencing of the work as well, trying to get the underground work done, scheduling those trades, and then trying to get all of that sequence and timing to work and come together. Overall, I am still confident and being assured by the consultant and contractor that we're on track for the end of October completion. But again, just kind of circling back, I know there's been some frustrations, we feel that too, we see that as well. We've been meeting, I mean, we talk every day about the job, about the schedule, we meet weekly. I believe there was a couple of weeks ago where there was a little bit of yelling that occurred in the meeting to try to understand where we're at. So we are taking it very seriously, but we do understand there are frustrations out there. And then with that, I can take any questions.
Questions for Director Coots? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor Tac. Byron, that was a great summary again, and I just wanted to thank the, all of the city's staff and communications and working with the local businesses. Again, just as you've reiterated, you understand, and I love the community outreach with Thursday Night with Sage, and I've done that with some other businesses, and it's great to give them a little extra exposure, so thanks for doing that.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Powers?
Thanks, Byron. Appreciate the update. Couple of quick things, just as this thing ebbs and flows and you think that it may have more impact on the business community, it'd be great to get more frequent email communication out to them in case there's any surprises, number one. Number two, I certainly realize the complication when you're working in conjunction with IDOT and the state, that it dramatically alters kind of the authority that we have and our ability to kind of navigate it on our own. But I did notice this evening is the first time you reference "end of October" instead of "October." So I'm not pushing you to those details, but we talked about three or four days of flex time, now it feels like we're kind of Halloween-ish? Is that what we should communicate to people in the community, to expect it more towards the end than the middle?
Yeah, so I would say nothing's changed with our delivery schedule. I mean, unless if it's just the way it's been written, it's always been the end of October for both jobs. I went in specifications earlier today and checked it for both jobs. I think we, in general, just say October, you know, the project's going to be completed in October, and of course, if there's an opportunity to finish faster, we will try to do that. But in general, both contracts have been written the whole time at the end of October.
Okay.
Bank Lane, actually the middle of October, with like final completion at the end of October.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Alderman Clemmons?
Two questions, or comment on a question. First of all, the walkway down the middle of Bank Lane, it's used a lot. There's actually more traffic on it than there has been, so I think it'll be pretty successful once it opens. And then the second is, how many businesses have taken advantage of the city's offer to help them out financially?
Yeah, so three at this point.
Okay.
Do you know how many are potential applicants?
Yeah, so there are 22 eligible businesses. We have communicated proactively with all of them about the nature of the program, what like sales tax data reporting requirements are necessary. I can't speak to why we've had only a few that have already applied, but having said that, if you recall, the council kept the window for this program open till the end of the calendar year. We will continue to follow up with them and make sure they're aware of the opportunity that exists.
Alderman Levert?
Hi, Byron. You mentioned moving the pedestrian sidewalk from the north, wait, from the south side to the north side, right, on Deer Path? You're working on the sidewalks by the bank right now, correct?
Correct, so it's actually the other way around.
Okay.
The pedestrian access on Deer Path has been on the north side.
And it's going to flip to the south?
Yes, so like by, correct, by UPS, it's been the existing concrete, actually.
So that leads me to my question. How will people access, because UPS and Sweets and Once Upon a Bagel, and they seem to get more traffic than the other side of the street, since the majority of the other side of the street is the bank, and how will that work? Will you have those little bridges to each of the businesses?
Correct, yeah. There'll be a ramp system similar to like Bank Lane and to what you saw on the south side of Deer Path. I mean, we've already been coordinating with like UPS and the furniture store, and we're aware that they want like a wider ramp, right? Which makes sense, like a four- or five-foot ramp, so we'll work with them on that. But yeah, there'll be some type of ramps, basically either going to an individual business or maybe going to like three businesses, like a ramp to like a little bit of a, I don't know, a walkway that serves like three doors.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My, the last item in my report, in our continuing efforts to engage the community and to seek volunteer participation, I've asked our Chief of Police, John Burke, to briefly highlight the successful development of the city's first Community Emergency Response Team basic training program, which just finished with our first round of program graduates, several of whom I see here this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tac, and members of City Council. The Lake Forest Police Department is proud to announce the successful completion of our first-ever Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT for short. This program is nationally-recognized initiative that prepares residents to assist during emergencies and disasters when professional responders need assistance. Our participants received hands-on training in first aid, fire safety, light search and rescue, disaster preparedness, and traffic control. This program strengthens our city's emergency readiness, fosters a valuable partnership between the public and the first responders, and graduates of this inaugural class will serve as Lake Forest's first official CERT team, offering support during critical incidents and community events, including Lake Forest Days in a few days. We'd like to thank and commend the following residents for stepping forward to serve. If I call your name, please stand up. Jim Axelrad, Howard Masters, Cindy Corrigan, Thomas Wilber, Scott Goulson, Gregory Janko, Teresa Zuska, Carlton Marcien, Weepke Drogi, Jonathan Kaplan, Matthew Varenco. And finally, I'd like to offer my sincere special thanks to Commander Ben Grum for putting this initiative together.
Yeah, I'll ask our graduates if you wouldn't mind coming up for a quick photo with the council, that'd be great.
Applause.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for partaking.
Thank you.
Well, there you go. You already got me, you got two, all right. It's a charge for that.
Before I let them go, are there any questions for the chief regarding the program?
Alderman Notes?
How do they get deployed if there's a situation that comes up?
So for right now, they're just scheduled events, so Lake Forest Days, they'll be assigned and partnered with an officer at a particular location, just so we can get going and start learning stuff. I think we can develop a phone chain if we did have something significant like a flood, if we had a prolonged event where we needed assistance with traffic direction. a flood, if we had a prolonged event where we needed assistance with traffic direction or traffic control. We'll get ahold of them and deploy them as needed.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Yes.
How often do you do these programs? And how do, how would local community hear about them to sign up?
So this is the first one?
Yeah. How often are you planning to?
Because it's a new program, I'm looking to get the group up to like 25, 20, 25 people. We advertised on the website and through the dialogue and some other research we have in our Facebook page. My goal is to run another one in the fall and try to get a big group of Lake Forest residents or a bigger group of Lake Forest residents. And then after that, there's like a dozen communities in Lake County that have a program. And the basic training, we can piggyback off of them. So I could send a student to Highland Park, they sent two students to us for this class. So we can almost run them continuously if they're willing to travel to one of the other Lake County communities to partake.
Okay, Alderman Levert?
Hi Officer Grum, how long do you, how long does everybody serve? Is it, is it a term or is it indefinitely? How does this work?
It's as long as they would like to serve. So they, they take the training, the training's actually certified through FEMA, they designed the course, and then after we're done with the training through FEMA, that is kind of, we have to follow their, their course guidelines. We go and design training ongoing monthly that's a little bit more specific to Lake Forest and how we would utilize the team going forward.
Alderman Novit?
And what's the commitment to become trained?
So the first, it's, ours was a little bit longer because it was the first one, but it's about 10 weeks for the basic training, one night a week for three hours. And then after you're through the basic training, we try to meet monthly with taking a couple months off, like I'm guessing in the summer when Lake Forest Days and forth and decline, like more when our events are, probably do more training and meetings in the winter, but it's basically once a month. And then we like to see them respond to or participate in five or six events or callouts a year.
So would there be, so there's an ongoing training then, this month, once a month is to kind of keep everybody?
Ongoing training, CPR, first aid and traffic.
That's great.
And we're, again, we're designing that portion of it, and I'm looking at our community partners like Highland Park and Round Lake and Gurnee and a bunch of other organizations that already have programs to see what their ongoing training looks like.
That's great.
Okay, Alderman, when they're serving, what are they aware that designate their role? How are they going to be identified?
Yes, so we're currently working on, typically they have a safety vest, because a lot of what they do is traffic control items, need to close down a road for an extended period of time to free up law enforcement officers, we'll utilize them for that. So there'll be a vasta safety vest that's a distinct different color than our uniformed police officers, and then also a polo shirt identifying them in the program, and an ID issued by our department showing that they are a member of the SERP team. So all of our officers and other community members, if they're called on, can identify that they're okay to be at a particular scene.
And they'll be standardized between townships, cities?
So it'll be specific to us. You know, we're looking at like the forest, go more with our community and our color schemes. Some go with like bright lime and different things, but I think we're trying to kind of fit into the community in our guideline.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Alderman Weber?
Thank you. Is there participation in work moving forward volunteer basis, or is there a stipend that they receive?
No, so it's a 100% volunteer program that they dedicate their time to. And so a lot of what we see is as people get to retirement age or college and trying to build a college resume, those are the kind of the two groups of people, which is unique to that program where you're getting a younger audience, a little bit older audience, and we're all working together on a team. It's kind of neat to see it all come together, what I've seen in other communities.
Are community events like the tree lighting and the Fourth of July things that these people might be deployed for?
Absolutely. You will see them out on Lake Forest Days. They will be, we have a handful of volunteers that'll be on some of the smaller intersections and paired with officers in crosswalks and intersections at Lake Forest Day. So our goal was to get it done and graduate prior to Lake Forest Days and have that kind of our first event. And definitely, we're going to try to use them in like even the weekly concerts in the green and stuff where we don't have as big a presence as we'd like, to have these members there with helping with traffic and just identifying things that are suspicious will help the community and that's where you see them utilized.
Perfect. Any others? Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say before I conclude my report, as they're walking out, thank you to all of the volunteers. I think that no one in this room is surprised to understand the level of volunteerism that we have here in this community, and a lot of times that can come in the form of more formal boards and commissions. It's a bit unique for us to have volunteers that are interfacing with daily operations, but I think that there's a lot of potential in it and maybe other areas too. So congratulations to Chief Burke, Commander Grum, and thanks for our volunteers. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Good stuff. All right, so the next item is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who'd like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. First report will be Public Works Committee, and this first item will be presented by Byron Coots. This will be approval of a resolution for a joint funding agreement for a federally-funded construction with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for construction of the Lake Woodbine Bridge Project. Section number 12-00094-00-BR for a local match estimated at $1,212,952 and authorize the city manager to execute required agreements and additional paperwork as required by IDOT related to this project. Coots, welcome back.
Good evening again. As stated, tonight I'm ultimately looking for your approval for the IDOT funding agreement for the Lake Woodbine Bridge. As you may remember, I presented this last in June, at which time I received your direction to proceed with the Spandau Arch Bridge, so the current, or what we're calling the current bridge, which was from last year when we bid it out, to basically proceed with the process of getting in line with IDOT to get on the, the next state letting, which is what we've been working on the last month or two. So now as we're working through that, basically the last step is, or one of the last steps is basically to complete this paperwork trail, which is basically the funding agreement. So it's really one of the last steps to get on the September letting. So in terms of the funding, just a reminder, we received two construction grants which totaled about 3.68 million. The local match, which was, as stated, is about 1.2 million. Ultimately, the city's costs are going to be based off of, you know, the actual bid price that we get in September. That bid amount minus the grants will be ultimately the amount that the city is responsible for. Mentioned this before with Deer Path Streetscape, but IDOT requires these funding agreements to be executed in advance prior to letting any project on the state bid opening. We are aiming for the September letting and then, you know, pending a successful letting, we would have the, the project start in mid or early to mid-January, and we'd have a lot of communication and outreach before then. With that, I can take any questions.
I have a couple of questions to start out with. So the total cost of this bridge project is almost $5 million, am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Do we know how many cars actually cross these bridges, this particular bridge in a given year?
In a given year, no, but I think on a daily basis, it's, it's probably in like, I'm guessing here, but it's probably in like the 500 range per day.
Okay, so it's a fairly low volume project. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I think that this is one of those situations where the only thing that makes redoing this bridge as it is even remotely possible is the fact that we were able to get 3.7 million dollars of government funding to do this. I mean, otherwise, the volume of this bridge and its visibility just couldn't sustain the city itself funding rebuild like this. And I only bring that up is because we have other bridges, and some of them are also historic, and the ability to redo these projects in this way is heavily dependent on the grants that we've been able to get. And I think people just need to be aware of that for the future, that this may not always be a possibility, and that other bridges that do have some historic or architectural merit may need to be done in different ways. Just something to think about. So having said that, does, are there any other comments or questions from the Alderman? Alderman Clemmons?
Byron, my compliments, you're the one who wrote the grants, and I know how tough it is to get federal money, and so my compliments to you for getting this done on behalf of the city.
Appreciate it.
Very good. Other questions or comments? All right, is there none?
What's that? Some of them take about 40 hours.
So are, at this time, are there any comments from the audience or somebody who'd like to address the council on this matter? Okay, seeing none, okay. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a resolution for a joint funding agreement for federally-funded construction with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for construction of the Lake Woodbine Bridge Project. Section number 12-00094-00-BR for a local match estimated at $1,212,952 and authorize the city manager to execute required agreements and additional paperwork as required by IDOT related to work on this project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, this would be a roll call vote.
Sir, Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Very good. The next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. So as is always the case, I'm going to read the items at the end. If there are any items that the Alderman would like removed or taken separately, please let me know. All right, there are six items tonight. First is approval of the July 7th, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes. Second, consideration to amend the approved 2025 regular meeting schedule for the Lake Forest City Council. Third is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. Legal Committee, Arthur Murdis, David Michael, Elizabeth Joy Guskot Mueller as Chair, and Paul Sundberg, and Zoning Board of Appeals, Henry Kleeman. Item four, approval of the check register for the period of July 1st through July 18th, 2025. Item five, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection withholding two proposed raffles in the city of Lake Forest, the Lake Forest/Lake Bluff Lions Club, and Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest Hospital, approval by motion. And finally, approval to waive the bid process and approve the purchase of a replacement streets section truck in the amount of $54,530 to Shepall Auto Group. Are there any items that the Alderman would like removed or taken separately? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the six omnibus items as presented?
So moved, second.
All right, this would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Very good. Alderman Bothfeld, are you Canadian?
Aye.
Just wondering. Okay. The next item is new business, and at this time, this will be presented by Fire Chief Andy Rick and Jim Locklear, Assistant Director of Public Works. This will be consideration of recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with White and Company in the amount of $620,000 with a 5% contingency for a total of $651,000 for design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services to support the renovation of the city's fire station.
All right, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thanks for having me. This is something we've been able to talk about over the last couple of months. So we're finally at that point where we're going to make some decisions about who we'd like to recommend going forward that we're going to use to start this project to officially roll forward. Just to give a quick recap on some of our project needs, things we've talked about in the past, obviously the biggest opportunity for us right now is that the police station development project is the one that has allowed them to move out and obviously is allowing us to grow into the space that's there. So while we'll miss our friends, this is a really neat opportunity for us. Some of the challenges that we have are the limited space for essential training and emergency preparedness that we've obviously addressed. We're a growing community that has grown, you know, it hasn't been a huge growth over the last 50 years, but we have grown, so our needs for our emergency response has changed. We also have insufficient room for the modern firefighting equipment and then the response needs that we're providing to the community. And then things like the sleeping areas, bathrooms, locker rooms, kitchens and dayrooms, again, are becoming undersized and obviously are at the point where we're missing with changing demographics and what we're presenting with our services as well. Facilities don't support current staffing models or the wellness needs. Things that we're finding are important to our staff and to the community that we just aren't able to provide with the limited square footage that we're currently under. The expansion is going to give us the opportunity to meet those needs for everyone. The RFP process that was put forth, we did get nine official proposals back to us. We were very excited to see that many, so we knew that we had a broad group of people to be interviewing and going through. We actually brought in four of those companies to sit down with us, ask a group of employees from the city some questions, give us a presentation. The neat part about this group, just to give you a brief overview, is it was office city manager, comm dev, building maintenance, public works, fire department, that were all involved in this. So we really had a broad group of people that would see things from a very different perspective and their own expertise, their own knowledge coming from it, the experience that they've had with other projects. The fun part about that was to see how with those four interviews, we all came together and honestly, it was surprising to me how much we were on the same page with the group that we went with for all very different reasons, which is very interesting. Quickly, again, these are the nine that we have brought in. Of the four, we actually are going to be recommending that we go with White and Company. One of the nice things I'd like to point out is they brought in two representatives today. Our two main guys, Jason and Patrick, are here. To me, I didn't ask them to come, I think it's really cool that they took it upon themselves to show up. It shows the importance not only that they have and the buy-in in the project itself, but just that they cared enough to take time out of their day to be here to, to represent themselves and to show that they care about the project. So I think that's really neat. Aside from that, some of the more technical stuff, their experience with a fully-integrated architectural and engineering firm was top-notch, they're focused on large projects, including fire stations, lots of experience there. Their dedicated and passionate project team definitely showed through in those interviews. The staff that has extensive past knowledge projects, they've worked with other agencies across the state and some local agencies as well. They have expertise in long-term planning and creative design with a focus on meeting budget targets, which is a big component, obviously. And conveniently, I'm not kidding, this is the part that just lined up perfectly for everybody, is not only did we think that they provided the top notch and every other checkbox, but they were also the lowest overall cost. So for us, it's an easy choice for us to present them to you guys, that they obviously make the right choice for all the things that line up, and then the cost proposal piece meeting not only below the budget that we proposed, but it shows that they take care and stock in some of those costs for the long-term that we're looking at. Brief project timeline is looking at, we're about 12 months to 18 months behind where the police facility was. So right now, we're in the initiation of the design phase, which includes this RFP, we're selecting this firm. And then we're looking at, with the police moving out potentially next fall, again, a 12 to 18 month timeline for us to be able to put together a plan, get the numbers, get the design, working with them, and then be able to roll. As soon as the police moves out, we're going to start breaking our side of the construction project ready. So again, tonight, the action that we're requesting is to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service contract with White and Company. The amount was $620,000 with a 5% contingency for a total of $651,000. That includes the design, construction drawings, the cost estimate services, and all the support to the renovation of the fire station. Any questions for me?
Are there questions? Chief Rick?
More or less a comment, and I, I know our finance department's going to do this, but at our workshops this fall, I think I'd like to have some, maybe a guideline of what's going to be happening in '26, '27, '28, particularly with regards to our debt service on the police station and potentially debt service on the fire station. So just a request from staff to have that ready for us at fall workshops, please.
Yeah, of course, I think that's a good suggestion, and obviously for any project in any given fiscal year, we review the capital plan for the city in the context of a five-year outlook. Some of the asset categories, we go further out than that. So it's important that you guys see anticipated project costs, both in isolation, but also in a fuller context of how it, how it fits in with other capital needs across the community. And in this case, our, as it has been tentatively budgeted, it is not anticipated that the city would issue any debt for this project. The cost and scope is more, much more modest than the police station, given the scale of the work. So at this point, it's anticipated it would be funded through our pay-as-you-go capital model and not through the issuance of debt. But we will prepare that for November.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Chief Rick. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to? the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? Okay, seeing none. For the third time, I'm going to ask for a motion to recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with White and Company in the amount of $620,000 with a 5% contingency for a total of $651,000 for design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services to support the renovation of the city's fire station. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Very good. Okay, so at this time, is there anything else that the council members would like to discuss? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C1. City Council will be discussing specific personnel and collective bargaining. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
This will also be a roll call vote.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, and at this time, I'd like to let the public know that upon completion of the executive session, there will be no further business.